This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is called to order, and it is being videotaped at the RMLD office at 230 Ash Street in Reading for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment. We just ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. Thank you very much. Phil, would you serve as Secretary tonight? Thank you very much. Karen Herrick is here from FinCom, not Mark Doxer. Hello Karen, thank you for coming. And now we have, the first item is public comment, if anybody has any. Sounds like that's a no. Or liaisons, that would be Karen or others. Cab, we do not have a cab representative tonight, so I think that takes care of the initial round of no public comment. And with that, I think unless there's anything else, we proceed to the presentation of the 2018 audit. And Colleen, do you want to have a preamble on the audit?
Um, what happened to Wendy? I'm just going to introduce Zach. You can take it from here.
Sounds good.
Usually Wendy does the little intro, but...
Okay. My name is Zach Fentross, I'm with Melanson Heath, the Reading Municipal Light Boards, or excuse me, Light Departments outside auditors. We just performed a six-month period audit ending June, or excuse me, December 31st, 2018. As you know, the Board recently moved from a June 30 year end to a December 31st year end, so we just performed a six-month audit. So that's going to be one of the big differences to what you're used to seeing as a 12 months of information, whereas this one is just six months of information. Um, I think, you know, before I begin, the biggest takeaways that I would like you to have is, the department has positive, you know, operating results this year, they're in a strong financial position. They has a well-funded other post-employment benefits trust fund, in that there was no management letter this audit period for the six-month audit. If I could, I'd like to have you turn to the first page after the table of contents. And this is the first page of the independent auditor report. The department received a clean opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive from an independent auditing firm, and it's the same opinion that the department has received in prior years. Next, I'd like you to turn to page three, which is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. The Management's Discussion Analysis takes place on pages three through six, and this is just a narrative summary of the results of operation. And this section also discusses any major financial areas. So Senator is simply sitting here and reading this to you. If we could, I'd like to turn to page seven, which is the Statement of Net Position. And we'll discuss the same things on page seven that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So page seven is the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And for the most part, the asset and liability figures comparing from December 31st to June 30th are pretty comparable. I'd like to highlight just a couple of differences and a couple of key items to bring to your attention. Uh, the first one is receivables net of uncollectible, which is the second line item from the top. And that's actually decrease of about $1.6 million from June 30th of 2018. And the reason for this is due to the calculation of the department's unbilled receivables. During, um, when the department calculates their unbilled receivables in June, they're basing it off of bills that went out in July. Those July bills include a lot of AC use. So the revenues that the department received in July are typically a bit higher than the revenues that they receive in January. So due to that difference in revenues that are received from July to January, there was a corresponding reduction in that estimation of that receivable by the department. So that's why you're going to see that decrease in that figure. Moving forward, that figure will be a bit more comparable from year to year when comparing from December 31st to December 31st. The next figure I'd like to bring to your attention is the net pension liability. It's about two-thirds of the way down the page, and it has a balance of $10,781,000. This represents the Reading Municipal Light Department's portion of the total unfunded liability of the Reading contributory retirement system. The department's portion of that total unfunded liability is about 29%. And that, the contributory retirement system is about 79% funded. What we see is the average in the Commonwealth is about 70%, so the contributory retirement system is above average in their funding of that pension liability. Something to keep in mind when looking at this net pension liability figure of $10,781,000 is that the department has placed some funds set aside to help fund this liability. It's actually three numbers from the bottom. Under net position, you'll see pension trust, and that has a balance of $5,878,000. Now unfortunately, according to accounting standards, that cannot reduce the liability that's presented up above because it's not in the control of the contributory retirement system. But if you want to look at it as, you know, here's our net pension liability, and we also have these funds that's been established and set aside for future funding of, uh, to the retirement system, that true liability is really about $4.9 million that has not been funded by the department. The next item I'd want to bring to your attention is the net OPEB liability. It's right below net pension liability, has a balance of $7,374,000. When the department moved from a June 30 year end to a December 31st year end, your actuaries produced new reports, and they produced those reports to be for the December 31st year end to help with the presentation of that liability figure. And it was actually the increase of about $215,000 compared to June. So again, very comparable figure from June 30th to December 31st. If we could jump to page eight, which is the Statement of Revenues, Expenses and Changes in Net Position. The figures here are only presented for a six-month period. So what we did as part of our auditing technique is we essentially doubled these figures up and compared it to what we normally would be auditing a 12-month period for fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2017. And generally speaking, these figures were very comparable to the, once doubled up, they were very comparable to the figures we audited in 2017 and 2018. The one number I'd like to bring to your attention here though is the third number from the bottom. It's change in net position, and that has a balance of $4,891,000. Uh, as I said before, when I, you know, one of the themes is that they had strong operating results this year, and this figure would reflect that. There was a question about whether or not to reply, to apply the 4% or the 8%, excuse me, how the 8% rate of return requirement from the DPU should be applied. We reached out to an individual at the DPU, and they told us that 8% was okay for the six-month period. And the department is below that 8% rate of return requirement with that $4.9 million change in net position. If I could have you turn to page 10. This is the Statement of Fiduciary Net Position. And this is where your other post-employment benefits trust fund is presented. And that other post-employment benefits trust fund is, uh, has a balance of $3,561,000. So these are the assets that have been set aside to fund your other post-employment benefits. And I think page 42, the last page of the report, presents this very cleanly. So if you jump to the last page of your financial statements, you'll see that the total OPEB liability, I'm looking at the 2018 column, the total OPEB liability was $10,705,000. However, the department has put aside $3,561,000 towards funding that liability, which leaves a total unfunded OPEB liability of $7,144,000. So it's at about 33% funded. This is a very strong position for the department to be in. When comparing the funding of the other post-employment benefits liability to towns, towns are generally well below 10% funded. So to be at 33% funded is a strong position. When comparing to other light departments, other light departments are anywhere between 25% to 40%. So to be at 33% is again, is a strong position for the department to be in. That concludes everything I wanted to bring to your attention here tonight. Again, uh, you know, in summation, again, the department did have positive operating results, has a very well-funded OPEB trust fund, and there was no management letter.
Phil?
Yeah, just to give you a quick update from the Audit Committee. Both the Town Audit Committee and the Boards Audit Committee met before this meeting. We heard the same presentation that Zach has just given here tonight. Both committees actually voted to recommend that the Board accept, that the Commission accept the audit as presented. I just have one question for you.
Yes, Phil.
It's maybe a future item. Do you see the new lease standard having an effect on the department here?
It should. So the leases are presented in no disclosure right now. I believe that there is, the department is a lessor and a lessy both. So it's going to be Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87. And I believe that's not going to come into effect until fiscal or calendar year 2020. So you have some time for that implementation, but we'll certainly be working with management to ensure that the department can implement that standard when, you know, it's necessary to implement.
Okay. My second question is again, another future item. There's a new thing, as you're well aware, of key audit matters. Do you have any thoughts on whether that'd be something the Board should consider as making requirement as part of your report?
To be honest with you, Phil, I'm not sure what you're referring to. Is this a new standard that's out, or?
Yes, there's a new reporting standards. Where you'd have a separate paragraph in your opinion letter that you would bring to manage, you'd bring to the governing people of key audit matters that took place in the audit, anything that's risky or something like that, and something like that. I don't know if that's, I don't even know if that's even applying to government, you know.
I'm not, I, to be honest with you, Phil, I haven't, I'm unaware of that. Regrettably so, but I can certainly look into it and get back to you. But as far as anything being overly risky or concerning with specific to the Reading Municipal Light Department, I don't think that there's anything that would warrant that type of disclosure. And I think that's indicative of there not being a management letter. If there was something that, you know, maybe could be improved, we would present that there. Or if there was a risky transaction that the department was engaging in, we would bring that to your attention in a management letter as well.
Okay.
Zach, I'm not sure you covered it just now, but if you did, don't repeat it. But can you talk about the month's cash on hand?
Certainly.
Because I know that was an issue we talked about at last...
Yes, if I could have you turn back to page seven. An industry standard in the guideline is to ensure that light departments have three months of operating cash on hand at all times. So what we do is we take the first two numbers, the unrestricted cash balance and then the receivable balance. So that's that $20,832 for unrestricted cash, plus that $8,705,000 for receivables, excuse me. And then subtract out accounts payable, which is about halfway down the page. And that has a balance of $9,718,000. What we do is we compare that to your operating cash and make sure that it's about three months' worth. Currently, that ratio is at about 2.6. So you're a little lower than the expectation, but I would like to note that as of June 30th, 2018, that ratio is at 2.3. So the department is trending in the right direction to ensure that it has enough operating cash on hand to cover three months of operating expenses.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have questions or comments on the audit? Karen, please, Karen Herrick, please, come on up and...
We got a microphone right here.
Yeah.
I'll just take this nameplate around.
Maybe we probably have a public comment, like, you know, when we redo our DAS to make it a little bit more easy, people won't have to...
Mr. Chair, Karen Herrick with Reading Finance Committee.
How are you? Thanks for coming.
I was wondering, on page 18, I was wondering if, and I'm new to these accounts, and they're very different from what we do on the town side. I was wondering if there are industry standard metrics for these, like the depreciation actually spells it out, but the construction, deferred fuel, deferred energy, and like rate stabilization?
Whether there's standards for these and whether we fit in the...
How will we compare light departments, other light departments?
That's actually, that's, I had a similar question in sort of, how do we, how do... You represent a bunch of light plants, right?
I do five to six municipal light plant audits a year.
Okay, and then, but the firm does more than that, right?
Uh, no, I am the light department guy.
You're the man, okay. Well, I think the context, the spirit of the question is, you know, how does this fit in? What are the standards? How do we?
As far as like a cash position goes by, you know, restricted cash, whether it be depreciation cash, construction cash, I'm unaware of any industry standards, but I can certainly look into that for you. I can tell you that comparative to the other light departments that I've looked at, the cash position for the Reading Municipal Light Department is in a better position compared to contemporaries that I've looked at.
Would it be possible to go through the list with that same perspective of how we, sort of how we sit?
I do, I can tell you the ones that I do, but too specific light departments and how you stack up against your specific light departments, I would be unable to do that at this point. But I would be more than happy to do an analysis for you and let the Board know where you stack compared to other light departments in the Commonwealth compared to your cash positions.
Well, yeah, Colleen, please, yeah.
Okay, some of these are related to policy, board policies that were indicated. Chuck could also speak to some of them. I mean, if, when you become familiar with our fuel transactions, I can certainly write a little bit, Wendy and I can write a paragraph on each one of these or point you to the right policy of how that amount is established. Because it's difficult to look at the number and then even compare it to other municipals if they don't have the types of transactions that we have for, say, purchasing fuel, okay? So I mean, I'm happy to do something like that for you. And Zach can look at some comparisons, but I think you probably need to know how we establish them here first.
How about, if you want to send an email to us or to Colleen? We can kind of clarify what the question is and get answers.
Yep.
And Zach, I assume that most munities have their own policies for what they need for each one of these.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, so are you ready for motion, Mr. Chair?
I think we are, unless there's anything more. Okay, Phil?
I move that the Board of Commissioners accept the audit report from Melanson Heath. Fiscal year ended, fiscal, actually, fiscal year, fiscal period, I think should be the right word there. Fiscal period ending December 31st, 2018, as presented in the recommendation to General Manager.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor? And the motion carries five to zero.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you very much, Zach.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Zach. Thank you, Zach. And...
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. And the next up, we have Colleen's report.
Yeah, I'm going to make this short and sweet. I'm just going to request, if I can attend the NAPA conference. And this year it's in New Hampshire. As you know, it circulates throughout New England. And also, if you're acceptable for me to go again, that we try to all coordinate whoever's going, and we'll have Kathleen remind the cab as well to contact Tracy of who's going to attend.
Do you have the dates there, Colleen? No, it's okay.
18th to 21st.
Sure. I think, yes, please, John?
Move that the Board approve Ms. O'Brien's travel to and attendance at the NAPA conference to take place from August 18th to August 21st in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire.
Second, second.
All in favor? And another 5-0 vote?
Yeah, I've already booked the hotels, so.
Um, yeah, it is, the whole community is usually up there, and it's a good opportunity to kind of, to the point, to the last question, you know, we get to talk to the other Commissioners and General Managers around the state and really learn law from each other. So it's a very, a very good event to attend. And it's kind of the one thing that the Commissioners go to. Maybe we should be doing more of that. Um, okay, thank you, Colleen. And report from Chuck, Integrated Resources Report?
Thanks.
We'll move the mic back so I don't blow out the speakers at home.
Did that happen last time?
No, I was told that I was too quiet last time.
Oh, really?
So I'm going to elevate my projection.
Okay, step up your game?
Step up my game.
Well, you do have a good sort of radio presence, TV presence. So, Integrated Resources Report.
So, basically, I'm coming back on power supply. This is a very quick presentation because we're tracking very well against the budget. We're performing better than was budgeted. Power supply costs in the market are lower. Loads are down due to a warmer than anticipated winter. While that's not the best news for retail revenues, it does make my job a lot easier in the power supply arena because I don't have any surprises out there. We did just come off of the Millstone outage, and everything is back up, running and copacetic there. So again, no surprises. What you see on this chart is overall a favorable position of our actual results to budget. And next slide, please. Uh, you can see that we're tracking very well against energy costs. That is the largest single component and one of the ones that's most easy to get accurate because our contracts are fixed price, so we don't see a lot of volatility there. Next, please. Capacity costs, again, tracking very well. And finally, I believe we get to transmission, and we see that transmission costs are also tracking well on that. So that's our aggregate package. Uh, this is the monthly summary. The item that I would call your attention to is the big red block in the middle, which is NEXTIRA. It looks oversized, but it is actually a combination of three separate contractual arrangements that we have. We're working on breaking that up a little bit. We just began in March with load following contract. And so I'm expecting that with next month's report, we'll be able to provide a little more granularity in looking at that piece of it. Uh, the other thing that I would like to call your attention to, our market power transactions are the yellow band, and you will notice that they are below the line this month. What that means is that our loads were lower than expected, and we were in turn net sellers into the market against our power contracts. So you saw with the energy pricing, however, that our costs are good. So not a cause for concern. You'll also notice that the yellow band is relatively small. So no worries or concerns on my part for those numbers. What I wanted to show you here, this was a screen capture that we did about a week ago. The blue color that you see on the map is very unusual. There is, down on the bottom, a rainbow scale for pricing. And to be in the blue area, one level up from indigo, means that the price is $20 a megawatt hour. And this is what we were looking at midday for... I can't quite read the... May 16th?
9:30 a.m.
At 9:30 a.m., we're looking at $20 a megawatt hour. Uh, so this is very unusual. The prices are way down. Uh, this means that we are down running in the most efficient natural gas units that are out there. But I just wanted to capture that. Usually, May, starting to head into the summertime, we're in the green blocks and occasionally maybe heading towards yellow. So this is just a very unusual time of year for us.
And the colors signify cost?
Uh, the colors are pricing blocks, yes. So the further to the left on the color scale that we are, the lower the pricing blocks.
And what do you attribute this to, Chuck?
Uh, the fact that it's cooler weather. We are essentially, the term of art is thermally neutral. We have neither heating nor cooling going on. We're at about 60 to 65 degrees every day. Last Monday was the abnormal kicker. We got up into the high 80s, and then immediately got rain and dropped back down. So with the rain activity and the temperatures being what they are, we're thermally neutral. Neither heating nor cooling. We're looking at essentially process energy, whether it's residential usage or commercial and industrial. It's a low-load period. It's the kind of load and price that we look for when the nuclear units go offline so that we're not incurring replacement costs any higher than necessary. So I just thought this was an interesting demonstration of what actually is going on right now. I think that's my last slide. Yes, it is.
Any questions on Chuck's presentation?
No.
And then, next, next piece of your, you were going to update us on plans for June 20th, I believe, is it?
Yes. I was asked to update on two solar items. The first is that the state has achieved a supplemental appropriation for the statewide solar program. RMLD is a participant in that program. We budgeted a quarter of a million dollars as our matching component for that. The state's putting a quarter of a million dollars up in our service territory. And under that program, we will pay customers $1.20 per KW of installed solar on approved solar project. This is a one-year program. It temporarily replaces the under 25 KW residential and small commercial program that we have now. The over 25 program will stay in place as it is. This just significantly increases the public investment in solar. It is independent of federal tax credits, and we'll see how it goes. We had a backlog of, I think, five accounts for this program. And we're starting to push them through. Energy New England is working to help us through the rebate process and the documentation that we're required to produce for that program. The other solar issue...
Can I add something? Uh, just to add into that, so that's a maximum of 25 KW size on the rebate, correct?
Yes.
And, but not to exceed up to 50% of installed cost, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're working on a press release on that, so it will go out. We're just putting the fine touches on it, and it's going to be out by tomorrow at noon time, so.
Does this make it easier and more affordable to do a project in our territory?
It certainly makes it more affordable. I don't know what kind of an impact the paperwork processing is likely to have on that. And there is a qualification standard where they look at the total solar impact or total solar strike, if you will, on the rooftop system. So that if you're sitting there nestled amongst a number of trees and it reduces your solar potential, you may have difficulty qualifying.
Right.
But yes, in theory, this will make it more advantageous and be a more interesting program to consumers.
Is it possible to give an anecdote? Like, let's say there's a project that does meet all the shading and all other qualifications, you know, requirements. Whereas before, you would have gotten X amount of money, now you're going to get what, what's the difference?
A 5KW system would be eligible for up to a $6,000 rebate. A 10KW system for about a $12,000 rebate. And the typical system size for residential going in is 5 to 7.5 KW.
And that, those numbers compare to what before this program was created?
Those are...
The figures you just mentioned.
Do you want me to? It was $1 per KW with a maximum of $2,000.
Okay.
And so on our website, that particular rebate will just have a hold on it. And it will say that this temporarily will be the new one.
Yep.
Because it's only until funds run out.
Right.
And then we go, we revert back.
So in other words, the maximum you could get was two thousand and now you can get as much as, you could be getting six, eight, ten, twelve thousand dollars?
No, you could get, you could get up to thirty thousand if you put in a twenty-five KW that costs sixty thousand dollars to put in.
Yep.
If you did a dollar twenty times the twenty-five KW and it cost you sixty grand to put it in, you could get up to thirty.
Okay.
But that would be the maximum.
Yeah, so it's a dramatic, dramatic change.
It's dramatic and because it's, you know, we're getting grant, basically grant funding on half.
Yep. Well, that's, that's great. And then, and we're paying for the other half out of?
Yeah, it comes out of our existing energy efficiency fund that we collect for.
And this is for?
It's not additional.
I'm sorry?
It's not additional, it's out of our fund.
And this is for, who's eligible for this? Anybody, any customer, any type of customer or as long as it's under twenty-five KW?
Residential and small commercial building an under twenty-five KW system.
Okay.
Anybody who builds twenty-five and over
Yep.
system would come under the
Different.
Commercial program. Given the size of those, they require individual review. They require engineering and operations to sign off that the feeder capacity is there to support it. We look at the economics of the project and they fall under the existing description.
So.
And what is it, what's the name of the program again? Is there a specific name or?
Solar rebate program, municipal light plant is the MLP, municipal light plant, solar program.
Thank you. But any type of customer who builds under twenty-five KW would be equally eligible?
Yes.
No matter what type of customer it is?
Yes.
That's great news. So I assume that's a headline for the June twentieth solar workshop, which will, by the way, seven twenty P.M., seven twenty, sorry, seven thirty P.M. on the twentieth of June. That's a big item to talk about, but not the only one. What did I say?
No, six, six twenty at seven thirty.
Six twenty at seven thirty.
Thank you. It's not July thirtieth at six twenty. Right, it is June twentieth at seven thirty. Proceeded by a brief regular, what did I say? You're just messing with my head.
Pick a number.
It's coming up very soon.
And will be posted.
Yeah, yeah.
Less than a month.
Okay.
We're working on the agenda and the slides.
Yes.
That is a, that is a good heading for it though, right, this new program?
This will be
Sure.
One of the topics covered.
Okay, this is a great, well, it's great news. And, and yeah, so I know you're drafting a agenda and that's wonderful. So it's an opportunity for the public to come and learn about this complicated subject that a lot of people ask about from a lot of different directions. And thank you very much for, for doing this and I hope the public will participate and, you know, learn something about what they can do. And with that, maybe we could, maybe we could, if there's a way to understand where do we sit in terms of our rates that we give people who have solar? And is there a way to say, what is our current? Because I know there's a level of solar penetration where it starts to kind of interfere with operations, which is a ways off, but I know that's a concern long-term. Where do we sit now in terms of solar penetration versus other municipalities or light plants? If there's a way to get a sense of that, sort of see where we are.
Each light plant is going to be different depending on how their distribution system is built.
Right.
The wholesale market impacts are going to be mandated by ISO. And so everybody will be under that constraint. Internally, our engineering and operations division is looking at a feeder-by-feeder assessment of the potential that we can take on before we have issues internally.
The rule of thumb is, I wanna say, in the teens or twenty percent or something. Once you get into that zone, it starts to be.
Is it steady going on right now?
Yeah.
That, you know, it's independent, steady being done by consultant. But the rule of thumb is between fifteen to twenty percent.
And we're, we're in the low single digits now.
Yeah, for a hundred percent.
But even, we're even less than, aren't we just a one percent or something? One or two percent? We're very, I mean, we're not anywhere near being close to.
It's the number of customers, is that what you're saying?
Or the percentage of our load that comes from solar would be significantly less than one percent, I think, at this time, right? Or?
Can we, maybe?
Yeah.
Let us finish putting that together.
Let's do it, yes.
We'll present it at the workshop.
Good point. Fine, enough said.
It's a good tease.
We will, we will cover these
It's a good tease.
In due time.
You, you have to come to the meeting, the workshop.
To get the answer to that question.
Right, yeah. Whatever that meeting is, which is June twentieth at seven thirty. Okay.
Okay.
We'll do a repeat on July thirtieth for.
Okay, thank you very much. Chuck, anything else, anybody else? What do you guys?
We need to move on.
We do. Well, if you start yakking someone.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
Joke them around.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, you all set Chuck or?
Yeah.
Okay, and the Kameed's up next. Engineering and Operations, Kameed Jafari.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello?
I guess that's my reverse slide. Okay. So these are the major construction projects. The first two are out of the Station Four, which basically they get away improvements. That's gonna increase the ratings of the feeders. So I'm gonna have more feeder capacity to, for contingency situations. And grid modernization, SCADA eight switches, we received those and we installed the first one that, for CY two thousand nineteen. But we are ahead in schedule as far as FY two thousand nineteen concerns because we installed all of those switches that we received for FY. The last time that, you know, we had the, for last year's budget meeting. The next slide shows the project, basically, construction, the battery storage. I got a good news for you. The battery is online, running. We basically shed the peak on May twentieth. We ran it between hours of three P.M. to seven P.M. That was supposed to be the test, but the test was done successfully. So we shaved one point nine megawatts.
Wow.
In addition to that, we run the generator and we added another two and a half megawatts. So we managed to, you know, to catch the transmission peak.
Nice.
Right on time. So the savings, you're gonna see that in, in two months, actually.
Great.
So congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Right?
Yeah.
Good.
Would you mention in the microphone that we have a ribbon cutting ceremony scheduled for July tenth?
Please mark your calendar for July tenth.
Yes.
The ribbon cutting.
What time of day?
Right.
Eight A.M. at celebration three.
So the project was ahead of schedule. It was supposed to go online June first, but we are ahead of the schedule. It's done and then, you know, so it's operational. So moving forward, we're gonna.
It's a great, great project.
Yeah.
It was great. We all enjoyed it. It was, it was a team effort. Major construction projects. You see that this is another one of those maintenance areas, the big that, you know, we started back in two thousand and fifteen and we're replacing, upgrading these pad mount switch gears. And the ones that you see on the left, these are the ones on John Spind Road that they were old and antiquated, disrupted. And the ones you see on the right, these are the ones that, you know, we replaced them with. This is, this is the industrial area that, you know, for the reliability, we're going through these and upgrading as needed. You know, this is aging infrastructure that, you know, it's upgraded. We also ordered six more that they're coming in for two thousand nineteen. And we got a total of twenty-five of those and so far we've replaced like about six of them. So we got nineteen more to go, but those nineteen's, they're not as in tough shape as these that, you know, were on the high priority list. So we catching up and we making progress on the maintenance. The next slide shows the area upgrades project. These are the URDs, the underground facilities that we, again, we have identified like sixty-five areas that, you know, on the list of the areas that they need to be upgraded. That means upgrading the cables, the transformers, the riser poles and everything. And as we go on the list, the priorities, you know, we upgrading them based on the oldest to the newest, which should be not more than, you know, ten years old. So we completed the Gloria Lane in North Reading. The step-down area upgrades, that's another maintenance area big that we go through these communities that, you know, we have these old step-down areas and upgrade them from A to Z. The overhead primaries, the transformers, secondaries, the connections, which, this is my favorite project because we go through it all, basically. From the poles all the way to the service connections to, to the houses and to the customers. This particular one included one pole mount transformer and four pad mount transformers, which they were all upgraded and I'm happy that, you know, we got a chance to do that. And that was in Essex Street, Linfield. Most of these old areas that are in Linfield and there's some in Reading and we got a few in North Reading. And Wilmington is fairly newer. The next one, it shows the list of the maintenance programs, you know, and basically we are on target. And in some of them, we are basically ahead of the schedule based on what we planned. So it's moving really great in a good direction. And we inspecting the feeders, the feeders, you know, the guys, you know, in rainy days, they go out and patrol the lines, making sure that, you know, there are no signs of, you know, troubles. And if there are, we schedule them and we repair, make the repairs. The next slide is my best slide because, you know, most people, they don't like to see these double poles as I've always mentioned. And I do appreciate the, you know, our valued customers' patience. But that shows that, you know, RMLD is working and, you know, we are continuously upgrading the areas. So it shows that in the, in most areas, we caught up with the double poles. In the highest that we have is in North Reading, sixteen of them. But this is a moving target. Every, you know, time that I give you a report, these numbers go up, down, up, down as we upgrading the poles and upgrading the areas based on the maintenance plans that we have. So that's basically it. The next slide shows the reliability indices. We are doing great. I mean, all reliability indices are well below the national and regional averages. Reading's reliability, RMLD's reliability is one of the best, top in New England area. I can give you, I tell you that with confidence. And it's the result of the maintenance that, you know, we've been doing and we started doing and catching up lots of troubled areas. And, you know, we, it's getting better and better. And I'm hoping that these bars, they go close to zero and, you know, before my retirement is gonna happen. The next one is showing you the outages. And Mr. Hennessy, I listened to your comments last night.
Oh, yeah.
Because you wanted to see that, you know, comparison apples to apples. You're right, we had annual and this time the bar, the blue bar shows the year-to-date, five years average.
Great.
And the red bars basically showing where we are year-to-date.
That's excellent.
So that's a better presentation of those, I guess. You see that we have, we have had more weather incidents and some announced, but the rest of them, more vehicle accidents so far, it's, it's pretty much the same. The rest of that, you know, we're doing well below. So again, the first three ones, they show that, you know, basically the maintenance has been keeping up with the maintenance. The equipment failures, they should be going down and, you know, the tree trimming is working. That's indication that, you know, our program is, is a good program, it's working. And wildlife, we catching on as we go on and we rebuild these areas that we add more and more on the system, on the exposed.
Can I ask, David, ask one question? The equipment, why such a dramatic reduction in equipment out causes this year?
Because.
You're averaging sixteen per year to this point per year. And all of a sudden, there's only three this year.
Well, I like what you said, the result of the maintenance. We've replaced them, lots of transformers. We have a transformer replace program, replacement program. That's the age, the transformers that we're replacing. And so far, we are ahead of the schedule for the year. But every year, we replace anywhere between, you know.
So that's what you think this is, is transformer replacement?
That's right. Transformer replacements, switch upgrades, these underground, you know, areas that we've been upgrading. So we have less cable failures. I mean, we are not out of the woods yet, but, you know, we are in the right direction. At least it tells me that, you know, the plans that we have, they're working, we don't have to alter them.
Okay.
You know, so.
I think, I think the five-year plan can, maybe consider some of the deferred maintenance in years before the five years.
Right.
Yeah, I think in the past, maintenance was, the transformer would blow and then you'd replace it.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, doing something proactively, which is what the department is doing now.
Yeah, that's great.
Administration now is much more proactive going forward.
It's good to see the results showing.
Yeah, it's pretty dramatic.
Yeah. That was my deal with Colleen before I come over. I said that, you know, I'm not the type of guy who, you know, use the Band-Aid approach.
That's exactly where we should be spending our funds.
If you give me the money. And thanks to the board for, you know.
And you agreed to that?
We did it in Danvers, it worked, it works, you know.
Yeah, and thanks to the board for approving, you know, the budget because, you know, this is what the result of, you know.
Well, it's an excellent use of funds.
Your leadership and letting us to.
Right, because it also leads to economic development. If you don't have reliable power supply.
Right.
And that's our goal. That's exactly what we're trying to do. Reliability for our customers as well as attracting more businesses in our area.
Exactly. And also if there's a big, a category three hurricane that blows through, the damage might be relatively less.
Right.
Because you've done more to protect, the poles are in better shape, there's fewer big limbs overhanging transmission, distribution lines. But that's hard to measure, but it's a big benefit.
Well, Columbia Gas didn't measure very well.
That is kind of a, that is an example, right?
It's a perfect example. You never know when it's going to hit.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
And I guess the last slide shows the, how we doing in the spending, you know. So we are almost, for the first quarter, we spent one point two million almost out of the seven point eight million that budgeted. So we are moving right along. Now, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, by all means.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kameed.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you, Kameed.
Love the new chart, thanks again.
Good, you're welcome, anytime. But by all means, if you'd like to see, you know, the reports differently, I would, you know, welcome any comments, anything that you want me to, you want us to add. We'd be more than happy to add or take off or whatever. If you're happy with the, the way that it's being reported, we continue the.
I think they're great, I really do. I think the pictures are very good and really helps bring a sense of reality to what you're doing and the charts and graphs for all of the presentations have improved dramatically in the last, I'd say, two years, easily.
I have to hear that, thank you. Yeah, the determination, yeah, we got, we got one, I guess, the determination uniqueness for the proposed acquisition of the land on Route one twenty-five. So that's something that the board needs to vote on. And basically what this is, is basically you, you are voting to waive the advertising, but not the, the central register. Still, we're just gonna go into central register, which all the bids and contracts for the municipal municipalities as well as the counties and state, the whole state is going to the central register. So we're still gonna go to the central register and advertise it there. But the local advertisement, you know, I guess, needs to be, we don't need to do that. That's gonna take a month away and we need to proceed with the PNS, with national grid. The letter of intent is signed and agreed, both parties. So we are proceeding to the next step, which is environmental assessment, phase one. And then if everything comes out to be okay, then we're gonna proceed with the purchase and sales with contingencies that, you know, well, if we get the permit, permitting of all the states and all the regulatory.
Do you want me to read the motion?
So basically, what, what makes this one a unique, basically, the determination uniqueness is where the, the system, the land is, or the parcel is situated above the one fifteen KV lines. above in the one fifteen KV lines.
Yep.
There are not too many parcels that are right, uh.
It's a great spot.
Above, yeah, it's a great spot, I agree with you.
Understood.
And, uh, also the interconnection to the, uh, to the, uh, national grid system.
Yep.
So that's what makes it unique.
Okay, I think we're, yep.
You did the same thing for the other parcels, so we just doing it for this parcel as well.
Understood, I think we've had a fair amount of discussion about it and it's a great, been a great effort, so, John, you wanna read that?
Be happy to do that. Moved that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the determination of uniqueness of property and waive the publication requirements of Mass General Law's Chapter Thirty-B, Section Sixteen, with respect to the acquisition of land located off Andover Bypass Street, Route one twenty-five in Wilmington, Mass., oh-one-eight-eight-seven, and identified on the Town of Wilmington assessor's map in Book Eight-Ninety-One, page fifteen, on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second. Uh, all in favor? Any more discussion while I guess we're voting? I think we were ready to vote.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so that was a five-zero vote, just to be clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Hamed. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, um, can I request that Chuck come back up and just do a quick, uh, community
Please.
management, uh, update?
Yeah.
So we're all here tonight to sing happy birthday
Yeah.
To RMLD.
Yep.
Uh, we were a hundred and twenty-five years old on May twenty-first.
Yep.
We put out a press release, letting everybody know that we're a hundred and twenty-five years old, um, and we have posted some, uh, things.
It's only one-third of the year, the age of the town.
Something like that, yes.
Exactly, exactly.
We, we've had some fun, uh, actually, and, and I don't know if we should be telling the commission that the employees had some fun, but, uh, we, we had the opportunity to dig through, uh, the vaults, if you will, and, and some of the boxes and, uh, found some historic artifacts, uh, photos and, and things, uh, we created a video, uh, by our, uh, communications manager, Joyce Mulvaney, uh, she did an excellent job with it and is posted on the RMLD website. She also came up with a timeline with a number of, uh, events, uh, that she was able to, uh, incorporate, including, uh, where we moved to different locations, so, a hundred and twenty-five years ago, uh, we were, uh, next door
Next door.
Uh, and in a hundred and twenty-five years, we have come full circle. We're back where we started
Yep.
Uh, if you will, so, uh, those are out there, uh, we encourage people to look at those and, um, this year, uh, we have launched the high school art contest, uh, the theme for this will be the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, so.
Nice.
Uh, we, we have that going, that's our
Nice.
sort of community activity. Uh, we, we did discover some advertising materials from around nineteen-twenty or so, uh, we were able to find one that, uh, we, we could use, the rest were somewhat politically incorrect.
Well, I see them by all means.
We decided not to use those, but, uh, uh, those of you who wish to view them, uh, they, they are in a pile in Joyce's office, so, um. And, uh, one last, uh, point that, uh, I feel, uh, needs to be made, nothing to do with the hundred and twenty-fifth, but, uh, at the last meeting, uh, I misspoke and I want to correct the record, uh, we have been talking about using the Volta program for, uh, charging stations and, uh, I indicated that they were Level One chargers, they are not, they are Level Two network capable chargers, that is what they have been using for the last three years, uh, looked back to try and figure out what happened and no one seems to know how that crept into, uh, our information, but Volta is particularly proud of using those and they've actually gotten their LEED, uh, point certification for, uh, for using those, so they are an extremely environmentally conscious, uh, firm for what they're doing and, uh, they are using the Level Two
That makes a lot more sense, yes, yeah.
And so I, I just wanted to be sure that that, uh, correction
That's good to hear. Yeah, yeah, that is good to know, yeah. Thank you, Chuck.
Can I add one more, please?
Please.
So we're not, I mean, other than what was done on the video, uh, to celebrate, we're actually delaying our birthday party till our open house, since we have a full week of appreciating all of the benefits of public power, that we'll probably try to schedule something on that Thursday, uh, Joyce will send some things out, so that'll be, maybe between, we're hoping to have a board meeting that night, so between the open house and the board meeting, that maybe we could have something, uh, to help celebrate and as well, I, we've got Joyce in contact with the town and they're, um, getting ready for the three hundred and seventy-fifth, so we'll be participating in some of those events, uh, so it should be fun to have some celebrations for the year, but look forward to ours in October then.
Will we have enough cake for all of our customers?
Yeah, we will have enough cake. Barbie, Barbie doll-sized cupcakes.
Yes. There you go.
Are you volunteering?
I will get him a voice coach. No, that, that's a commission quintet.
Um, okay, I think
Next meeting?
Are we all?
Yeah.
Are we good?
Thanks, Chuck.
Any more discussion on any matters? No? No, okay, then I think we're just, we're gonna reiterate, uh, the dates of our next meeting, which is Thursday, June twentieth, twenty nineteen, and Thursday, July eighteenth, twenty nineteen. And cab meeting, the nineteenth of June, uh, with Tom covering and John's covering the July meeting. So, just a question, so we're starting at seven for a regular board meeting and then the, the workshop, the solo workshop's really seven thirty. What did we say, start at six thirty or seven? We're gonna. And what do you think you need, is seven enough, half an hour to get rid, business taken care of before?
I would think so, I thought we're gonna, we can wait.
So we could do seven?
Have a meet and greet first, um, from six thirty to seven, that was, uh,
I see what you mean.
concept we were.
Right, then that would be a little awkward, then it'd make people sit for a half an hour while we do stuff, so.
Well, we can, we could flip it around, if you want to have a meet and greet and then do the meeting, the workshop between seven and eight and then do the regular session, you know, and then it's a hard stop at eight, but I, I think, or, or eight-thirty.
Sure, or what if we just do the meeting at the seven thirty, which we usually do, meet and greets beforehand, then we have the workshop until seven thirty to nine or whatever, and then we can do our business at the end.
Run that by me again?
It just means that we're gonna do the solo workshop right at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, that's what I, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought you said.
But that, you said only a half an hour for the workshop, but it probably would take longer than that, wouldn't you think, if people want to?
No, I said, uh, a meet and greet at six thirty
Yes.
And then start your regular board meeting, which is the workshop
Yes.
Between, uh,
Seven thirty.
Seven to eight, or eight-thirty
Seven.
And then, you know,
Yes.
Whatever we have on the session
Yep.
Eight-thirty to nine, then executive session if we
Yes, agreed.
Something like that.
So now, but the, the key thing is that we're starting the meeting at seven, not at seven thirty.
I think that would be appropriate if you want to fit everything in.
Okay, right, okay, good, okay, so, okay, fine. But we can arrive at six thirty, 'cause there'll be a lot of people coming in.
Yeah, I think we're, we're, we're talking about having some, uh, uh, tripods set up with some interesting pictures to just take a look at and, you know, just from light refreshments and people can mingle and, and get their, uh, formulate their questions, uh, no one's allowed, Dave, you're not allowed to give any answers before we come into the workshop. And then we'll come in and, uh, Chuck will do the presentation, probably about fifteen or twenty minutes and then we can open it up for questions or however you'd like to do it, that's how I'm invi-
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah. And as part of that, meet and greet, would there be images of other projects that have happened, you know, within our territory and elsewhere? We can talk about that.
Yes.
Yeah, we can talk about that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, uh, I'm not saying an hour is right or wrong, I think the key question is how long should the workshop be, 'cause the rest we can, we know how long our meetings are.
Sure.
Half hour, you know, meet and greet is good, so is it an hour meeting, is it longer? I don't know.
I mean, I think we should allow
So that'll be dictated by the agenda.
Allow an hour and a half for it, if we don't need it.
We can move into earlier.
Yes. We can start stuff earlier, but let's allow at least ninety minutes for the workshop. I mean, to do, to go through it all and
We don't need it, we don't need it.
We don't need it, but there'll be people here.
I think so, 'cause it, you don't have them that often, so.
Right, I mean, um, and maybe it should even be two hours, but.
Well, if it's all a meeting, you don't have to.
Segmented, right.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
So my question is, how are we gonna get the word out?
But it has to be posted, right, I mean?
Yes.
Right, 'cause it'll just be at the end.
Immaterial, it'll just be whatever.
Exactly.
How are we gonna get the word out?
Uh, we have, uh, you know, Joyce is working on the communications to be sent out, um, we have a preliminary invitee list that, you know, I'll be sharing with Dave, we're gonna go over some of the logistics, uh, but I figured we'd do that offline between Dave and I of, of what we've come up with, um.
Maybe we should give a door prize or something to attract people, a door prize.
Like a, uh,
Electric car.
Raffle?
Like the door.
We'll give people a door. Okay. I like what you're thinking.
We'll think of something fun for, uh,
Yeah, right.